Let's call this meeting to order. I'd start with the roll call, please.
Council President Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Corman.
Here.
Roll call Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Okay, thank you, Jason. First up, we have a public-
I'm here, I'm s- I'm sorry, uh, she's here.
Oh, here she is, okay. Councilmember Benedetti.
Okay.
Karen.
Right, we have everybody, sir.
Okay, perfect. So first up, we have a public hearing, and we have Paul Hines to present.
Thank you, Mayor Favone, and good evening, members of the city council. Um, if someone could please confirm that you're viewing a PowerPoint right now?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, for the record, I am Paul Hines, a planner with CED, and for those of you listening on the telephone, my phone number is four two five, four three zero, seven four three six, and my email address is P H I N T Z at RentonLaw.gov. And I'm here tonight to provide an overview of proposed interim zoning controls related to homeless shelters. The house proposal is to update Renton Municipal Code with an immersive the ordinance, which is included in tonight's agenda, to clarify RMC land use definitions and remove one land use, clarifying correct text related to Title IV's unclassified use interpretation process, the distinctions between principal and accessory uses, and staff titles, allow a single COVID-19 deintensification shelter for a limited term, and add the following two land use terms to our code, extended stay hotels and homeless services use, along with approval criteria, standards, and zoning locational and scale limitations. An explanation for these changes is rooted in the World Health Organization's announcement in early 2020 that the novel coronavirus, or COVID-19, was a global pandemic, followed by, on March 31st of this year, King County's local health officer issued a local health officer order authorizing King County to use only legally available resources to deint- intensify or reduce the density of existing homelessness shelters and encampments in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. On or about April 9th of this year, in coordination with King County and under King County's lease with the Red Lion Hotel and Convention Center located at One South Grady Way, the Downtown Emergency Services Center, or DESC, began using the Red Lion site as a COVID-19 deintensification shelter for persons experiencing homelessness. City staff immediately made the following land use and zoning determinations regarding the COVID-19 shelter: first, that a hotel is the only lawfully established land use on Red Lion site; two, that COVID-19 shelter does not meet the definition of a hotel according to Renton Municipal Code; a deintensification shelter is not a recognized land use in RMC; and finally, a diversion facility slash diversion inter- service facility or concrete shelter, and neither of those land uses are allowed within Red Lion sites of commercial arterial or CA zone. City staff attempted to negotiate a memorandum of understanding with King County for an agreed upon date to terminate use of the Red Lion site. However, those negotiations ended without commitment, and subsequently, the city issued a two-count finding of violation for one, a land use not allowed in the zoning designation, and two, operating without a city of Renton business license. King County and Red Lion site owners both requested a hearing to challenge the finding of a violation, which was held before the city's hearing examiner, or HECs, on August 14th, with DESC also participating in the hearing. King County, DESC, and Red Lion site ownership are referred to here on out as shelter operators. And the shelter operators argued that the COVID-19 shelter is a hotel. The city's counterargument was that the COVID-19 shelter does not meet the definition of hotel, and that the operation is more, are most closely aligned with either a diversion facility or concrete residence, and yet neither of those land uses are allowed within the CA zone. The hearing examiner, by written decisions on August 31st and October 2nd, ruled on the finding of violation and directed shelter operators to either cease current use of the Red Lion site within 60 days, or to apply to the city for unclassified use interpretation. The hearing examiner opined that based on existing code, city staff will likely determine that the outcome of the unclassified use interpretation may be to deem the COVID-19 shelter either a hotel land use, a social service organization land use, or a combination of the two. Regarding the hotel land use, the hearing examiner noted that the most compelling reason to disagree with the city's 30-day interpretation is something that the Renton City Council didn't expressly adopt, a 30-day limit for hotel stays. And regarding the social service organizations land use, the hearing examiner noted that there is an argument to be made that added overnight shelter use to a social service organization, which allows day shelters, could reduce the impacts of day shelter and thereby make a conditional use permit unnecessary. And if the city council considered an overnight shelter to be a more benign use than a day shelter, it would have expressly authorized it as a permitted use elsewhere in the use table. So based on the hearing examiner's decision and deliberations, staff are recommending updates to Renton Municipal Code based on four different categories, the first being clarification of the RMC land use definitions and the removal of one land use. So starting with social service organizations, the staff would propose to largely leave the existing definition intact, but remove day shelter from the list of example uses that are permitted, along with, say, food banks and clothing banks, and instead, list that in the prohibited uses, along with overnight shelter. These facilities are allowed through a hearing examiner conditional use permit in the R14 residential multifamily, all three industrial zones, and all of our commercial zones except the UC zone, and no changes proposed for the zoning. With regard to hotel, staff proposed to revise the definition to clarify that it is a building in portion thereof where a majority of the net floor area is dedicated for the rental rooms for transient occupancy for significant purposes in exchange for payment, and typically based on a per-night-per-room basis for no more than 30 days. And that transit means less than one month, or less than 30 continuous days if the rental period does not begin on the first day of the month. The rest of the existing definition would remain largely intact, except we would clarify that kitchen facilities are not permitted in individual rooms. And hotels are allowed outright in all of our industrial zones, west of Rainier and 167, as well as all commercial zones, except our commercial neighborhood zone, and no changes proposed for zoning. With regard to diversion facilities, we propose to revise the definition um, so that it is a facility that provides inpatient healthcare for individuals that are self-admitted or ordered diverted or referred from jails, hospitals, doctors, similar profession, similar treatment facilities or professionals, or by first responders in King County, such as law enforcement, first responders, hospital emergencies, department social workers, and similar professionals. We would further revise the definition so that it is, um, these, these facilities provide an array of inpatient healthcare um, treatment and support services largely focused around behavioral mental health, but some outpatient healthcare services may be provided. And again, we propose no change to the zoning, and these are allowed through a hearing examiner, CUP, and medium and heavy industrial zones. However, we would propose to link these facilities to the care of no more than 100 individuals. And we also propose to remove the diversion interim facility land use, as this seems to be largely redundant with diversion facilities. The second category is the clarification and correction of text related to Title IV's unclassified use interpretation process, the distinctions between principal and accessory uses, and staff titles. Starting with principal uses, we would like to state that permit uses are distinct from other uses listed separately in the use table. With regard to accessory uses, affirm that some accessory uses are specifically listed in the use table, whereas other accessory uses are determined by the administrator on a case-by-case basis. And related to unclassified uses, the administrator, upon a proposed unclassified use, shall indicate which zones, if any, do permit the proposed use, and may impose locational restrictions and development standards. And finally, the administrator must find that the use is in keeping with the purpose and intent of the zone, the rented conference and plan policies, and other adopted plans as may be applicable. Third category is the allowance of a single COVID-19 deintensification shelter, which would be a facility just for that, for deintensifying homeless shelters and encampments um, that are affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. We would allow no more than one um, to operate within the CA zone, and that after June 1st of 2021, no COVID-19 deintensification shelter may serve more than 100 individuals at a time, and that no COVID-19 deintensification shelter may operate within the CA zone after the expiration of these interim zoning controls, unless city council extends the allowance for such a facility. And then finally, adding two land uses, along with approval criteria, and standards, and zoning and locational scale limitations. Starting with extended stay hotels, the definition would largely match the definition of hotel, except we would allow both kitchen and sanitation facilities in individual rooms, as well as no limits on the length of stay. And propose these hotels be permitted outright in industrial zones and the CO zone, west of Rainier and 167, and permitted outright in the COR zone. And then finally, homeless, homeless services use, which is essentially either day shelters or night shelters. This is based on Bellevue's municipal code for homeless services use. Staff proposed to allow this in the light, medium, and industrial and heavy zones, uh, sorry, light, medium, and heavy industrial zones, our commercial village zone, our commercial office zone, and our commercial arterial zones through a hearing examiner conditional use permit, and limit it to no more than 100 individuals for overnight shelters. And overnight shelters with one fifty beds must be separated from other homeless services uses by at least a half mile. This land use would require preapplication, um, cemental of all cemental materials, a preapplication community meeting, and a preapplication site and building inspection. Cemental materials would include a narrative, as well as procedures and plans to address potential issues based on homeless populations served, such as a code of conduct, security, maintenance, methods of communication to the community, city departments, and local state and law enforcement. Minimum requirements for both facilities, that is, day shelters or overnight shelters, would require both adequate toilet, bathing, sleeping, and laundry and storage facilities, access to wifi, recycling and waste uh, collection facilities to meet the demands, designated smoking areas no closer than 25 feet to perimeter property lines, front desk staff, designated dignified privacy rooms, such as lactation rooms or medical counseling rooms, a permanent address and mailroom, and a final safety and security plan. For day shelters, access to electrical outlets to meet the demands anticipated would be required, and for overnight shelters, uh, permanent beds not to exceed 100, and a dedicated electrical outlet for every occupant of a permanent bed. We would require that these facilities incorporate crime prevention through environmental design principles. Um, that would include things like visibility of entrance and exit points to and from any structure, open and well-lighted pedestrian connections, and video surveillance to entrance and exit points. We would also require common areas, um, some measures, uh, to enhance the resident enjoyment uh, through things such as libraries, roof decks, patios, and gardens. And the city may impose other mitigation measures, uh, to mitigate environmental public saves or other identifiable impacts. And similar to other, uh, very specialized cemental materials, the city may require independent technical review um, by a hired contract consultant. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, this is a public hearing. Julie, do we have anyone signed up for comments?
Uh, for the record, my name is Julia Madzigian. I am the city council liaison. I have six people signed up in advance to speak. When I call your name, I will unmute you, and you will have up to five minutes to address counsel. First on the list is Howard Schneiderman. Go ahead, Howard.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you. Uh, my name is Howard Schneiderman. I'm an attorney for King County, including the Public Health Department, Board of Health, and the King County Executive. And, uh, I'd like to just speak to let you know that we've submitted two, uh, sets of comments via letter, which you, uh, should have all received today. The first is from the local health officer, Dr. Jeffrey Duchin. The second is from Shannon Bradock, the deputy county executive. Just, uh, want to let you know that those, uh, those two comment letters contain, um, our objections to the proposed ordinance, and we ask that you take the time to, uh, review them and consider our thoughts and concerns. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Lisa Chaye Ramon. Go ahead, Lisa.
Yes, thank you. I am Lisa Chaye Ramon. Um, I'm an attorney at Northwest Resource Law and counsel for Downtown Emergency Services Center. And we've also submitted written comments, and we hope that the council will take those into consideration. As you know, DESC is currently using the Renton Red Lion to house people who had to be moved um, out of the main shelter in Seattle uh, in response to the COVID-19 crisis. We, um, would like to address the definition of the COVID-19 deintensification shelter that's included in the ordinance. First, uh, there's a timeline set out that, uh, is totally unclear to us. We can't tell whether six months from the effective date of the ordinance, the current use of the Red Lion has to be reduced to 100 people, or if the use has to end entirely. Um, unfortunately, none of us know when the pandemic will end, and this ordinance, as it's drafted, uh, will force either 130 or 230 people out of safe housing and onto the streets of Renton in June. We join the city in hoping that the pandemic's over by June, um, but timeline as it stands is arbitrary, and the results are flat-out dangerous. Um, I'd also like to address the homeless services land use that's added by the ordinance. We agree with the city that homelessness is a crisis, and we applaud Renton for trying to do something to help. However, um, as the ordinance is written, homeless services providers will not be able to comply with the ordinance. And the results will be that no homeless services exist in Renton. I, um, would like to believe that that was not the intent of the ordinance to make a process that's so unworkful that you keep all homeless services out of Renton, but that's what you have right now. Um, one of the biggest issues with it specifically is the 100-person cap. Uh, the most likely scenario is that a homeless services provider will use a building that already exists. We understand that limiting the size of a new building is reasonable, but to ask that existing space be wasted in the face of the crisis that the city has identified um, is, is a little bit inhumane. Um, the second major issue that we have is that service providers can only do so much to manage the behaviors of their clients and other people in the city that may be homeless. There are provisions in the ordinance that require homeless services providers to manage people in public parks and, um, I think it says green belts and transit. Uh, and it's not, it's not even applying to just clients of the homeless services providers. Um, we understand reasonable limitations and, um, asking providers to assess behaviors of their clients near their buildings. But, um, other than that, uh, as it stands, the provisions are unreasonable and unworkable. Uh, finally, this ordinance is not an emergency. We've only had a few days to review this. Um, and even though DESC first talked to the mayor, the chief of police, and the fire chief about the use of the Red Lion way back in March, they were not consultative on this. Um, and even the COVID-19 provisions do nothing to prevent the spread of COVID-19, um, and should not be adopted during an emergency process. If you'd like to create an effective ordinance that addresses homelessness, this particular ordinance misses the opportunity to collaborate with DESC. DESC is the most experienced and successful provider of homeless services in the Northwest, and we would be happy to work with you to create an effective and productive ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, next I have Allison Isinger, who has signed up in advance to speak, but I don't see you in the audience. Allison, if you're out there, could you raise your hand? Coalition on Homelessness. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Allison Isinger. I am the director of the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness. Um, our mission is to mobilize our community to challenge systemic causes of homelessness and advocate for housing justice. Councilmembers, I learned early this morning of this proposed ordinance and, um, the supposed emergency nature of passing it. What I can tell you is that I am neither an attorney nor a land use expert. I am a social worker and a public health professional, and I have the privilege of serving as the director of a coalition whose members include organizations that work in municipalities all across King County, including Renton, to provide core, essential, life-saving services and housing for residents of King County. I may not have had a chance to read all 40 pages of the ordinance and analyze them, but I do understand what an emergency is. An emergency is a Washington COVID-19 case count total of over 6,000 new cases over the last three days. An emergency is over 11,751 people experiencing homelessness in our community on any one night. Half of them in shelters that are full, and half of them outside braving the elements. And that was before the COVID-19 pandemic struck. If we have learned nothing else through this pandemic, it is that the health of each individual person is bound up in the health of all the other people in our community. By taking swift action, community leaders, service providers, people within Renton supported life-saving shifts in services that we should all be proud of. I can tell you that we have partnered with local government to assess how many shelter beds have been lost in our community since the beginning of the pandemic, and there are at least 400 fewer shelter spaces now than there were at the beginning of this year. Every single bed, every room, is helping keep the spread of COVID down and is helping preserve people's lives. I hope I don't need to tell you that having a home is the equivalent of being able to have health in the best of times, and especially now. When you talk about needing to pass this ordinance on an emergency basis, I wonder what that emergency looks like compared to the emergencies of COVID-19, to the emergency of homelessness, and to the emergency of racism in our communities. I hope I don't have to remind you that the history of zoning law in this country is closely tied to attempts to discriminate and exclude and divide communities. And I hope that you will not pass this ordinance on an emergency basis or otherwise, but that you will engage with organizations among my membership, including DESC, but others that are saving lives by moving people into hotel rooms. Um, and with your own citizenry, and your own service providers, and your own congregation leaders, and I hope that you will consult your consciences and ensure that your hasty action does not actually further divide and increase risk, but that you reflect, take a deep breath, and consider who can help keep people safer. And that includes people who are homeless service providers, the staff who are risking exposure on a daily basis to keep people safe, and the folks who are, um, urging you not to take this action this evening, but to actually work in partnership and make better ordinances that will actually preserve health and housing. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Sumir Singla. Go ahead, Sumir.
Thank you and good evening, members of the council. My name is Sumir Singla. I'm a partner at a law firm called Williams, Kastner, and Gibbs, and I represent Renton Hotel Investors. I too have submitted a letter on behalf of my clients for the record, and I hope you will have a chance to review that letter. Uh, I want to follow up a little bit on one of the points that the previous speaker had made about the systemic way of zoning ordinances, uh, have formulated, um, our community, uh, so far, and it also relates to one of my clients. And I want to introduce one of my clients who is a local business owner. Renton, uh, Red Lion is a minority-owned business. Mr. Thabir Bhatt is one of the owners, and he moved here from India eh, with only $20 in his pocket. He's lived in the area since 1989. He's drove a Stedda taxi for the first six years, and in 1991, he was voted onto the board of directors and served as vice president for the Stedda Taxi Association. He's worked hard his entire life. He's saved his money, and he bought his first business in 1995. And he slowly grew his business to now what is in front of you as the Renton Red Lion Inn, which employs numerous people and makes significant financial contributions to the city of Renton. He has been a sponsor of local charitable communities. He has been involved in the local Sikh temple and serves as the president of Sarbatapala Charitable Trust. He is an active member of the East Indian community. He is a leader in the Renton local Sikh community, and he mentors many young people and young entrepreneurs in and around the city of Renton. Now, Mr. Bhatt's faith instructs him to constantly give to others regardless of their financial or other circumstance. And this is the reason he has organized weekly food drive, food drives during the COVID-19 pandemic, which have been highlighted by the Seattle Times. When King County approached Mr. Bhatt to provide resources and housing for the county's most vulnerable homeless population, he recognized that there is a high risk of contracting COVID-19 if they didn't get help. His faith, his duty, and his commitment to his community drove him to agree to help during this unprecedented time. Now, what happened next is very unfortunate. As soon as that was decided that he was going to help, he has faced unbelievable discrimination and harassment, including from some of the individuals who are now advocating for this particular, particular ordinance change. He has been made to feel like he did not belong in the city of Renton, even though he has been a member of this community for nearly 30 years. He feels that because he is an immigrant with an accent, he is somehow not worthy of owning a business at the same level as his Caucasian counterparts. Unfortunately, this implicit bias, contempt has also been expressed by local community leaders, and they have driven to demonize him and his partners. The attitude is translated into harassment by local agencies. He has worked cooperatively with the Renton Police Department, the Fire Department, and other agencies, now only to turn around when the shelter is in place or the hotel is being used for these types of services, to now call him essentially the enemy, and to tell him that he would be better off rejecting the lease. Mr. Bhatt is trying to reach out to local community leaders to explain his perspective, but he's been dismissed, ignored, and condescended to. This is the environment in which you are considering this legislation. This is the environment in which a local minority-owned business is being affected. I have been a municipal attorney. I have worked for the state legislature. I can tell you that this legislation is going to lead to protracted litigation, some of which has been outlined in my letter, so I won't go over it. What I will go over is using hotels and these types of deintensification shelters is proven to be effective. There's a recent study from the University of Washington, which is also cited in my letter, which proves what the Renton Hotel is doing along with King County and DESC works. So, members, you have to ask yourself the question, what happens when all of these people will be affected and will be let out? They will go into the local communities. Coronavirus is going to spread. It is going to lead to further public health crisis. I urge you to reconsider, take a step back, and work with the previous speakers to develop a plan that actually works. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Daniel Malone. Go ahead, Daniel.
Am I, was I not unmuted there? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead now.
Okay, thank you. My name is Daniel Malone. I'm the DESC executive director. I, um, spoke and interacted with you at, I believe, your April, uh, council meeting, uh, around the time that we were getting the shelter operation up and running at the Red Lion property in Renton. Um, at that time, of course, we were, um, uh, fairly new into the pandemic. At that time, of course, we were fairly new into the pandemic and acting with great urgency due to the community spread that was happening of the virus and the tremendous concern that there would be major outbreaks among our very vulnerable and medically frail populations staying in crowded congregate settings, especially our main shelter in downtown Seattle. And so, we were extremely grateful to be able to move out of that other environment into a much safer space in the Red Lion property. And I'm very pleased to be able to say that as a consequence of that, we have avoided significant outbreaks of COVID spreading among people. And almost assuredly, that would not have been the case had they remained in the crowded environment, staying on bunk beds in very close quarters with one another. DESC, as I shared with you previously, is an organization dedicated to meeting the needs of people experiencing homelessness, especially people who have longer experiences of homelessness and have disabling conditions, including behavioral health disabilities and compromising medical conditions. DESC does this work not just through emergency shelters, but also through the provision of permanent supportive housing and licensed mental health and addiction treatment services that take a variety of forms. One of the things that makes DESC successful is our strong work on helping people address the full array of needs that they have. And one of the ways we conduct that work is to make sure that when we place an operation in a community in a neighborhood, that we engage in certain kinds of activities to create relationship with neighbors and make sure that they understand us and who we are and how we go about our work and what we can do to be contacted and to follow up on any issues and concerns that come up. And while our operation in the Red Lion did not have a lot of lead time in order to establish that kind of work early on due to the urgency of the pandemic, we did engage in various kinds of work with officials in Renton and your political and police and fire services, including some of you, and also subsequently through monthly meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, inviting any neighbors to come speak about different kinds of issues. And we've been pleased to be able to participate in that kind of work with you. The ordinance that you have proposed has very significant rules related to establishing and operating services for people experiencing homelessness in Renton. And our quick read of that is that many of those rules may be more designed to keep such services from being able to happen than to actually facilitate them being able to happen in the city of Renton. And we would like to have time to work with you on crafting an ordinance that could actually be successful to meet the city of Renton's needs for addressing its part of the regional homelessness crisis that affects all of us so greatly. And I would invite you to also include the employee union that represents many of the workers at DESC, which is SEIU 1199 Northwest, which has its headquarters in Renton, you may be aware, which represents so many of the staff who work on site at the Red Lion and who are the people carrying out the day-to-day activities of supporting our residents and doing our work to be the best neighbors that we can be. So finally, you know, when I spoke with you before, we didn't know when this pandemic might end, and that is the case today. We don't know when it would end, and we think it's inappropriate to set a timeline on shutting things down before it's over. Thank you.
Okay, the next person I had signed up to speak in advance was Lauren Fay, but I don't see Lauren in the audience. Lauren, if you're in the audience, can you raise your hand? And if you're on the phone, can you press star nine? Okay, I don't see Lauren. If there's anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council regarding the interim zoning, please raise your hand. Okay, we'll start with a phone number that ends in eight-six-one-four. Could you please start by giving your full name and your city of residence, please?
Hi, council. My name is Sarah Combe, and I work with the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance. I'm calling in tonight to express deep opposition to this ordinance, which threatens to shut down a much-needed shelter serving some of our most vulnerable community members. Aside from being inhumane to restrict the Red Lion Shelter from operation, there is no shortage of recent research that points to the shelter being absolutely necessary for the health and well-being of our entire community. A study released on November first funded by the National Institute of Health draws clear connections between evictions, homelessness, and the spread of COVID-19. When people lose their housing and shelter is unsafe or unavailable, they tend to stay with friends and family, shifting a city's distribution of household sizes up significantly. During the current pandemic, the public health effects of this are disastrous, leading to wide community spread and the compromising of any lockdown efforts. Shelter deintensification models such as the Red Lion Hotel are absolutely critical in preventing the spread of COVID. In addition to that, a study just released by the University of Washington and King County, which a previous speaker mentioned, shows excellent outcomes from the deintensified shelter model that are nearly unprecedented in homeless services. Not only did this study find that the county's deintensification strategy significantly limited the spread of COVID-19, but deintensified shelter residents also have far better outcomes in health and well-being and higher numbers of exits to permanent housing than congregate shelter models. For people staying at the Red Lion Shelter, having a private space and overall lower levels of anxiety has led to greatly reduced interpersonal conflict and a significant decrease in emergency 911 call volume. And this ordinance, which severely restricts homeless services, is not an emergency, as many other speakers have mentioned. It's unconscionable, both in the current moment we face and in any attempt to make sure all of our community members are housed long-term. This ordinance introduces a homeless services classification that includes burdensome limitations and regulations. In other words, it's yet another barrier to making sure that thousands of people in our county that experience homelessness have a place to live. And it's coming at a time when having a place to live also means stopping the spread of a deadly virus. Again, as other folks have mentioned, land use codes have a long history of being used as a mechanism to exclude people, divide people, and keep people from resources they need to survive and thrive. And it's always those marginalized by our systems who are hurt the worst. This is just another example of land use being used as a tactic to harm the very people who need the most support right now. If anything, we should be scaling up the Red Lion model to meet the true need, which is quite possibly going to grow significantly higher if the eviction moratorium comes to an end next month. Eleven thousand seven hundred fifty-one people experienced homelessness in King County in 2020, and that's likely an undercount. And the latest census pulse data released earlier this month found that one hundred five thousand six hundred forty-five renters in the Seattle metro area are currently behind on rent. We cannot forget the level of crisis of homelessness in this region even before the pandemic. That is the real emergency, and now we are dealing with a second emergency that amplifies the scale and impact of homelessness even more. In times of crisis, we need to see local elected officials stepping up to prevent and end homelessness swiftly and humanely, not strategizing to make it harder to shelter people. Thank you, and I see the rest of my time.
Thanks, Jason. Next, we have Sasha P. Sasha, can you go ahead and please start with your full name and your city of residence?
Yeah, hi, my name is Sasha Pollak. I live in Seattle, Washington, over in West Seattle. I am a certified peer specialist who works out of one of our Pioneer Square clinics in downtown Seattle, and I provide mental health and behavioral health services in perspective of the client's recovery. And I'm in attendance this evening in opposition of passing this ordinance. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us and our clients to utilize the Red Lion Hotel, house and help our clients prevent and spread the coronavirus. Working five days a week on the front lines, interacting with clients who are not sheltered or housed, I have potential risk and exposure to the coronavirus, and having the Red Lion Hotel available to our clients not only keeps our clients safe, but our staff and the community with which they reside. Homelessness is considered a state of emergency in our state and in our city, and to push and basically evict my clients out of the middle, out into the streets in the middle of pandemic is a great general health and safety risk to the community. And our clients, I've heard love being able to utilize the Red Lion and has been a huge benefit to them. And as was mentioned earlier by a speaker, the clients, the residents have called the Red Lion home. They have found a lot of peace and comfort in being able to go back to somewhere consistently. And, you know, a lot of our clients don't have that consistency, and it's been something that I know my clients that I serve have found to be one of the most secure things and most consistent things in their lives today. And that's just speaking from a personal experience. So I'd ask the council that you reconsider passing this on an emergent state, in an emergent state, with careful thought and consideration. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Alex Brennan. Alex, go ahead, and if you could state your city of residence.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Alex Brennan, a resident of the city of Seattle and Executive Director of Futurewise. Futurewise works throughout Washington state to encourage healthy, equitable, opportunity-rich communities through wise land use policies and practices. And I am joining you tonight to express our opposition to this ordinance and also to our deep concern that the city of Renton would be putting up barriers rather than working with providers to facilitate housing for the most vulnerable members of our community. The State Growth Management Act requires that local governments make adequate provisions for existing and projected needs of all economic segments of the community. And while I've only had a little bit of time to review the ordinance, I'm concerned that the barriers that are being put in place to providing provisions for people experiencing homelessness mean that the city of Renton will fail to meet that obligation. And that's not just a legal obligation, it's also a moral obligation. And in this moment when we are experiencing the COVID-19 pandemic on top of the ongoing homelessness crisis that we have had for a longer period of time now, it's really important that all of our cities are contributing to meeting this challenge. And so, I really hope that the city council will consider taking a step back, rethinking this approach, and working with partners to come up with a solution that works for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, and next we have Diane Dobson. Go ahead, Diane, and please state your city of residence.
Thanks, Julia. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Diane Dobson. I'm the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and I thank the city of Renton for their thoughtful consideration with an ordinance impacting our community. I haven't had the great time to review the ordinance, admittedly, but hearing the conversation tonight, I felt it prudent to speak up. Contrary to some of the accusations of Renton having no homeless services, we do. Is it at a level as great as other communities? Maybe not. Is there work for improvement that we can make? Of course there is, as I would point fingers at every community surrounding us as well. But to shoulder some of the accusations of Renton not working on behalf of the individuals experiencing homelessness tonight, like some of the individuals have stated, is a burden our community should not bear. That is fantastic that the shelter guests have made improvement, and it is amazing and incredible that the COVID spread has been reduced because of the facility that was put in in the midst of a pandemic. But I've been on the other side of those meetings. I still am awaiting information that I started requests months ago on and am continuing to be dismissed by the county. I have been in those meetings, in fact, facilitating and hosting meetings, not monthly, but every other week with business owners and community members with shelter operators. And I would like to point out that Daniel Malone's staff, Noah Fay, has been involved in those meetings, but not one of the other individuals testifying tonight have been. There have been no county officials, nobody representing the Coalition of Homelessness, no attorneys for any of the represented parties. It is unfortunate, the impression that is being made, as though the city of Renton is unwilling to work with these parties, as continued request has been made to the county by, at minimum, the Chamber of Commerce, where I have pleaded at our stakeholders' meeting for the county to work with our city and coming together with an agreement, as they are the individuals who hold the solution to the barriers, to find a collaborative approach that works for everyone, not just for the benefit of the individuals in the shelter, but lessening the impact upon our businesses and our community, who, while unfortunate, have had very tangible impacts and are losing a part of their soul every time an employee is forced into a position of dehumanizing individuals, to ask them to leave their store, to stop finding shelter in their doorways, to stop urinating or defecating in their business, to stop the impact upon their businesses. And like everyone is quick to point out, yes, we are in the middle of a pandemic, but it is both a health and an economic crisis. It took months of our time and advocacy to gain access to the mitigation fund for our businesses to reach into. Those mitigation funds will be cut off with any expenses as of December 31st, when the CARES funds run out. And despite being advised by the county, they would likely continue the funding after the first of the year with the county budgeting, I am now advised those funds were not accounted for. So to hear the county at the table today chastising our community leaders for their unwillingness to work, as we on the other side have experienced just that from the county, is disheartening to say the very least. And while the individuals who are here today testifying on behalf of the shelter services have great cause, I also point out they're not Renton residents. They're not in our community, and they do not live with the ramifications of the decisions that they are making. There is no doubt that the deintensification facility is important to undercut the spread of the virus, but there is no doubt the deintensification facility has caused impact to our community. So if the council does not pass what I presume to be an ordinance for the best interest to our community, I would hope that they demand the county and those representatives to be at the table in discussion on how to make it work. But that table should include our service providers, our emergency responders, our businesses, and our community members who are impacted. Because as we have been continually reminded, homelessness is a regional issue. And while the individuals at this facility may not be from Seattle, the solution to homelessness imposed upon our community is a county approach from Seattle, and it failed on a major level from the very get-go on working with partners, as they are asking of you today.
Okay, next I have Lindsay Grad. Go ahead, Lindsay, and start by giving your city of residence.
Looks like...
Excuse me?
Yes?
This is Krista Strasba. I got the notification, but I don't think it was my turn. I just didn't want...
Yeah, Lindsay, I think Lindsay must have... Oh, there's Lindsay.
Oh, good.
Lindsay, did you not want to speak?
No, I did, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you carry on?
Yeah.
Okay, great. This is Lindsay Grad. I'm the Legislative Director for SEIU Healthcare 1199 Northwest. This is Lindsay Grad, I'm the legislative director for SEIU Healthcare 1199 Northwest. I'm testifying tonight on our union's behalf, and we are headquartered in Renton at the Evergreen Building. The Red Lion Inn is our closest neighbor. I myself actually did grow up just a few miles east of Petrovitzky Road, though. We've heard a lot of comments tonight that really did a better job than I could ever do, Alison Isingers, Samir Singla's, Daniel Malone's in particular, so I won't retread that ground. I will say that I submitted written comments on behalf of our union, I hope you all can take a look at. And I will add that I was speaking to our D E S C members, many of whom work at the Red Lion this evening, and trying to walk them through what was in this ordinance. And one of the members asked me, you know, how could this be if one of the clients was simply a customer of the Red Lion who might have the exact same struggles, you know, how could they be, you know, sort of deemed illegal by zoning? And, you know, it's simplistic, but it's not inaccurate to say that what this ordinance actually makes illegal is our members and the work they do. Homelessness services, that is just another word for the union members that we represent, the union members that are going to work every single day during a pandemic in order to support people, to keep them housed, to get them, you know, on their own path forward in life, to be restoring their human dignity. And honestly, it was really low after yet another hard day of work in a pandemic to have to tell our members that, that this ordinance is actually, you know, basically banning the work that they dedicate their lives to. And the work that so far at the Red Lion has been extraordinarily successful. You know, people have already cited the research here tonight. The owner of the Red Lion is in support of this work and how it serves these individuals, his business, and this community. You know, and I think that, with all due respect to the immediate past speaker, this ordinance is not in the best interest of the full community. We may be able, as Daniel Malone said, to come to the table together and to work on targeted, specific ways to take better care of the multiple interests that the city of Renton has to juggle, but this ordinance is not it. This ordinance is once again using zoning as a tool to exclude people in ways that are fundamentally inequitable, that will have racially disproportionate impacts, and that in the middle of a pandemic will truly put lives at risk, not just the lives, by the way, of those current residents of the Red Lion, but all of our lives, including the 32,000 lives that we represent in 1199 of healthcare workers who are going to work every single day on the front lines of a pandemic and who it is all of our jobs to support by doing everything we can to stop community spread of this disease. And so, you know, I thank you for the time tonight, I thank you for reading the comments we submitted in writing, and I plead with you to please put this ordinance down. If you want to continue conversations, you have my contact information, and we would be happy to meet at any time, any day, but please do not support this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, Krista, thank you so much for letting me know earlier, and you can go ahead now.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pavoni, President Perez, and council members. My name is Krista Strasba, and I am a Renton resident. I am a community member here. I'd like to take a quick moment to thank the council for listening to community and working to pass the ordinance in support of a Black Lives Matter street mural here in Renton last week. I'd also like to thank the council for advancing the Stand for Justice Budget Demand Number One, which is to create an Equity and Empowerment Commission into the development stage with the city. These steps don't go unnoticed, and I know many people, including myself, are eager to see their implementation. Please remember with me that anti-racism is a marathon. Keeping it a priority as you govern through COVID-19 and the budget cycle is key, because as we know, it can easily become a flexible add-on instead of the necessary staple it's got to be. So in that spirit, and knowing that marginalized groups, especially Black and Indigenous people, experience homelessness at higher rates than whites due to longstanding historical and structural racism, I ask as a community member, someone who lives here, that you reconsider your position on the interim zoning ordinance presented in the public hearing tonight. From what I understand, there are over 230 people currently staying at the Red Lion during the COVID pandemic. But let's not forget the pandemic of racism that's been impacting community members for far too long. We cannot ignore race as a factor in this context. Please drop the ordinance, consider the intersections of poverty and racism, and place people over codes. This would be humanizing, and I believe another step you can take towards practicing anti-racism. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council regarding the interim zoning controls? I see no one else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Next, Jason, do we have any correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, I did receive several pieces of correspondence from Sumire Singla of Williamson Castner, Dr. Jeffrey Dirshin of the Public Health Seattle King County, Lisa Roman of Northwest Resource Law, Shannon Braddock from the King County Executive's Office, Lindsay Grad from SEIU, the union, and Marty Coystra and Patience Malaba of the Housing Development Consortium. I received that today, all the correspondence was forwarded to the council and the administration, and it was also available to the public by request to the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish of the council at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Corman.
I had a discussion with the council president earlier today, and we talked about leaving the written comment period open a little bit longer to address some of the concerns that have been raised about the fact that some people have said that they haven't had that much time to take a look at this. And so I'd like to move to close the oral part of the public hearing, but keep the public hearing open for written comments until 5:00 PM on November 30th. And with those comments deliverable to the city clerk at rentonwa.gov.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the oral portion of the public hearing be closed and that we accept written comments through December 30th, is that right?
November 30th.
November 30th. All in, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm only, I just wanted to ask on the selection of the date, just to know if there's any chance, just knowing that we are headed up against the Thanksgiving holiday, if there is even, if we could push it just a little bit further back, but still give staff time to prepare. I just, I want to be cognizant that we're literally heading to Thanksgiving.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, as the maker of the motion, I'm open to staff and council suggestions on a better date if that date's not the right choice.
Okay. Councilmember McGurven, do you have a suggestion on dates? Are you looking for another?
So, just to keep us on track, I would hope that we, if we were to forward this ordinance, we could still consider on that following Monday. So I'm wondering if later in that week, just a couple more days, just knowing that we're not having many working days left. And I don't know if that'd be the second or the third, or even as late as the fourth, if that's possible. I don't know what, as far as getting everything published in time, our, I'm noticing our requirements would be.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Jason?
That was Mr. Prince.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Prince.
Seeing as the agenda comes out on Thursday, can we give it until 5:00 PM Tuesday, which would be December 1st?
Okay.
I'll second that, as long as it's, if that's...
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'm trying to remember, oh, if this works, I'd like to amend my motion to, instead of November 30th, make the date December 1st.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Corman, seconded by Council President Perez, that the date be moved to December 1st. Any comment, questions? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, now we have to go back to the original ordinance and pass that, so...
Not that we're against the motion.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, motion. So there's a motion to close the oral part of the public hearing and keep it open for written comment till December 1st. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have administrative report.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have two items. Start your holiday season with Small Business Saturday on November 28th. Renton small businesses are offering incentives to shop locally. The Renton Downtown Partnership is providing free goodie bags to shoppers who spend $10 or more at downtown merchants. The bags will include coupons, promotions, and surprise treats, and will be available through the shopping season while supplies last. Renton residents can win a winter staycation that includes a one-night stay for two at a Renton hotel, as well as dining and shopping credits. All you have to do is patronize a store or restaurant in Renton that is new to you. Post photos on your Facebook or Instagram account during November and December and tag them with hashtag #RentonHolidays. Each post gets you one entry, so the more you post, the more chances to win. And finally, you can check out traffic impacts around the city at rentonwa.gov/traffic.
Okay, thank you. Next up is audience comment.
Okay, next we'll open the remote audience comment period. It remains a strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Please refer your comments to the full council, and in so doing, we ask that you refrain from impugning the integrity of the members of this body. The city reserves the right to eliminate or end these public comment periods and/or remove anyone from the meeting at any point if we deem the system as being abused or is no longer suitable to allowing the city to conduct its necessary business. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by Julia Medzigian, council liaison. Ms. Medzigian will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker if you have been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that it is their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you're addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. When your time is almost up, please wrap up your comments. Ms. Medzigian.
Thank you, Jason. For the record, my name is Julia Medzigian, I am the city council liaison. I have no one signed up in advance to speak this evening. For those signed into Zoom, if you would like to speak, please use your computer to raise your hand. If you've joined by calling into Zoom and you would like to speak, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. When I call your name, please state your name and city of residence, and you will have up to five minutes to address council.
Diane Dobson, go ahead.
Thanks, Julia, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. So I come, Mr. Mayor, greetings, Mr. Mayor and Renton City Council. I come to you again tonight as the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce and as an active member of our Renton community, and I come to you to say thank you. These times we are facing have been so trying, and I don't think you all get thanks enough for the servant leadership that you provide. Mr. Mayor, you are new to your position, and in addition to learning your position, you've dealt with fires, floods, social justice events, shootings, violence, de-intensification facility with businesses experiencing challenges and decision makers who wouldn't communicate, and decision makers who made choices without involving our community, an administrator out on emergency medical leave, an administrator retiring, a handful of early staff retirements, a retiring fire chief, furloughs, shared work approach, the departure of a chief administrative officer. You've taken flak for canceling Renton River Days, cruised the loop, Fourth of July, not opening the pool, canceling the recreation events, closing the playgrounds and the basketball courts, nothing at all that generates a good feeling at having to do it, but you did. And thank you for doing so and for looking out for the safety of our community as paramount with your decisions. As a side note of other deserved thanks, thank you for finding a way to make Christmas happen. We said in half jests this summer, are you going to cancel Christmas too? And you and your team have found a way to make it work, on a scaled-down level, but even more special and meaningful as a result. You've had budget planning in the midst of uncertainty, shutdowns on one of our biggest industries, construction that was already planned and had federal funds associated with it on a community already paralyzed from COVID, transitioning to all virtual yourself, a new leader at the chamber who asks a lot of questions, and never mind the general public who, without question, we know you cannot please everyone, and some who are louder than others whom you seem to never be able to please at all. You've had the support of the city council, but that also included new council members who were learning their roles and processes and making their place as well. You've exhibited patience to those around you who have been learning, and you've offered wisdom and guidance to those in new places, myself included. And never mind COVID, the changes industries are facing is huge, new policies, budget restrictions, reallocations, and while COVID seems to have no timeline, it didn't stop the various timelines imposed by the county, the federal government, and more, all being new to your position. And now another transition, a transition of appointment with the interim chief administrative officer of Chief Ed Van Bailey, and we at the chamber could not be any more thrilled. Chief Van Bailey is a man known in the community for his honor, integrity, transparency, and servant heart. He is local bred, high school aside, who has done an amazing job at working with groups, communicating with our community, juggling multiple tasks and responsibilities, and leading a team through transition himself and not missing a beat. You have called up a community superstar as a pinch hitter, and we might suspect he's going to outshine even our great expectations from him. And boy, aren't we the lucky ones. This wasn't doubtedly another tough decision, a decision that I'm sure was not taken lightly, and I'm sure will bring about questions of their own. Take it from my approach, if you have haters, it means you're doing something right. But the questions are not of the man you have appointed or of the approach you are taking. I might venture to guess they stem from people's own concerns about the uncertainties in the world around them, as we never know what tomorrow might bring. An uncertainty with consistency is sometimes an easier decision for people than to make change. Chief Van Bailey, Mr. Mayor, and the city council, you have the full support of the Renton Chamber of Commerce as you proceed with this transition. We are excited for what the future may hold and the collaborations yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, your check is in the mail. We'll have it sent shortly.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council during audience comment? Please raise your hand. I see no one else, Mr. Mayor. Wait, wait, wait. Sarah Hagan, go ahead.
Hi there, this is Paul Hagan, I'm on my wife's computer, she's here with me. We're residents of Renton, have been for about six years, six years now. And I just wanted to thank the members of the city council for considering to kick the unhoused folks out of the Red Lion. I was rather concerned that in the midst of a global pandemic and heading into the holiday season, we would show some form of empathy for human beings less fortunate than those of us who are in the room today. I see that it's been great for these folks' mental and physical health, and, you know, really, this time of year, there's nothing less than we need. I see that this was an emergency measure, because I'm assuming that it was rather pressing all the empty homes and buildings around here. It seems like we've got a lot on our plates that we needed to handle, and can't think of anything else that we should be spending our time on than this. Again, showing a severe lack of empathy for human beings. I've got a three-year-old upstairs, and the next room over is our seven-month-old, and I can't wait to teach them that when faced with doing the right thing or looking to lean on zoning ordinances to find an excuse to relocate people, that we went with the right decision, which is looking for legal roundabouts to further mentally and physically harm people who live here. So really, A-plus, A-plus job, everyone, really appreciate the effort that you're putting in. And gosh, I, you know... Oh, sorry, it looks like I dropped on mute there. And just really appreciate, the last comment I had was that we spent a further five minutes a moment ago talking up the good work of the city council, and just blew past, and made sure to call out the haters that the council was faced with. And, you know, gosh, if there's something that won't generate haters, it's, the action's being considered today. Appreciate it. You can have my other two and a half minutes back.
Okay, it looks like we have Joseph Todd who would like to speak. Go ahead, Joseph.
So, good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Profon, councilmember president, Ruth Perez, and other councilmembers. I just want to really stress the point that we are holding a council meeting and leaning on ordinances to kick out homeless people who are there only because they have no other place to go and because of COVID-19. Nobody selected the red lion because we needed to house homeless people on a regular basis. It's strictly because of what's going on in our country right now with COVID-19. It's having a large uptick here in South King County, and you folks are right now in that room, which I know you're not going to pay me any attention, you're just going to breeze by, go ahead and pass your ordinance, but just going to breeze by and kick some homeless people out who have no place to go. And then, on top of that, you've got to sit there and pat somebody on the back who is thanking you for kicking some homeless people out and telling her, checks in the mail. So, you tell me, when you grew up and you told yourself that I wanted to give back to my community, and I wanted to be a council member, and I wanted to do the right thing and engage and help folks be the best they could be, that one of the things that I really wanted to do in my life was kick out some homeless people who are experiencing...
Mr. Todd, I would like to ask you to please keep your comments on track. This is a business...
My comments are on track. This is the second time you've interrupted me when I've tried to...
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have no one else with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have six items on the consent agenda for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to pull item C from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Perez.
I'm hoping the council concord with the consent agenda minus item C.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Perez and seconded by Councilmember Corman that the consent agenda be approved minus item C. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item C has to do with the ordinance where we've prolonged the public hearing for comments, so I'd just like to ask that that be rescheduled appropriately for the, so we have the comments before us first.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Corman, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that item C be rescheduled to relate to the motion passed earlier.
Can I clarify for the December 7th meeting? Is that what we're doing?
That's our next meeting.
That's our next meeting, yes.
Yeah, so that, December 7th, then, yes, if that sounds okay to the staff.
Okay.
And I'd want to point out, too, the ordinance was not on the agenda for tonight for first reading.
No, okay.
Oh. Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure I'm not, I'm not getting crosswise then with the, so...
I think you'll be okay, Mr. Corman. We can, we can reschedule this particular item to 12/7 and have the ordinance, if it's ready, if you guys are all ready for December 7th.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, I would move that this item be rescheduled to the December 7th meeting.
Okay.
Didn't we already make that motion?
Yeah, I wasn't clear on the date, though.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
Move on Councilmember Corman, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that item C be rescheduled to the 12/7 meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have unfinished business. Council President Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee of the whole has a committee report to present.
Okay, we have a committee of the whole committee report. This is regarding the 2021 state legislative, regional, and federal priorities. The committee of the whole concurs with the recommendation of the administration to adopt the 2021 state legislative, regional, and federal priorities as presented. The 2021 state legislative agenda and the 2021 state support opposed bills handout serve as guidance for city staff as it works with the legislature to achieve the city's goals. Additionally, the 2021 regional and federal affairs agenda outlines the city's priorities and key issues related to other government agencies and jurisdictions that it coordinates with and that impact the community. The committee further authorizes the administration to work with state, local, and federal agencies and the legislature to advance these priorities, and that the resolution regarding this matter be presented when it is ready.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Perez.
I'm hoping the council concur with the committee of the whole committee report.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the council concur with the committee of the whole committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Van?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince?
Oh, you already know. Finance committee has committee reports.
Okay. Finance Committee Committee Report for November 23rd, Approval and Claims and Payroll Vouchers. Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable total payment, $6,484,248.35 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers and two wire transfers. Payroll, total payment of $1,505,924.28 for payroll vouchers, including 566 direct deposits. This is the October 16th through 31st pay period. Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $64,404.60.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Right, next report is regarding the authorization to purchase a replacement network storage system. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the purchase of the pure network storage system, including 24 months of support, subscription, installation, delivery, and taxes from Ivoxie Consulting, Inc., per state of Washington participating state contract, in the amount of $247,977.61.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding the 2020 year-end budget amendment ordinance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an amendment in the 2020 year-end budget in the amount of $12,166,453 for an amended total of $845,857,129. The Finance Committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this 2020 year-end budget amendment be presented for first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, and the final Finance Committee Committee Report for tonight is regarding a supplement number three to a contract with the Washington State Department of Transportation for Lake Washington Loop Trail Phase III project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the local agency agreement supplement number three to Contract 14066 with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the obligation of grant funding and all subsequent agreements necessary to accomplish the Lake Washington Loop Trail Phase III project.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
That's Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There, next up is Councilmember Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next up is legislation. We have one ordinance for first reading.
Right, this ordinance is regarding the year-end budget amendment. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending the city of Renton fiscal year 2019, 2020 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 5898 in the amount of $12,166,453, adopting an amended 2020 city of Renton salary table and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Prince? I move that these ordinance, this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Next up, we're on to new business. Council President Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, December 7, 2020, the committee of the whole will meet at 5 o'clock via video conference, and we have one item on the agenda, which is Renton School District Meet and Greet. And on Monday, December 7, 2020, at 7:00 PM, the city council meeting will be meeting via video conference. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti?
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need to announce that the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, December 7th, at 4:30 PM via video conference, and there's just one item on the agenda, and that is setting compensation for the Bronson Way Street vacation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, December 7th, at 3:30, 3:00 PM, excuse me, Finance Committee will meet by video conference. We have three items on the agenda: renewal of city's liability insurance, Arbor's professional services agreement, and emerging issues in finance. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Corman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a Planning and Development Committee meeting to announce for December 7th at 3:30 PM. It'll be a video conference, two items on the agenda. The first is city of Renton and King County growth targets, and the second item is emerging issues in CED, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman, you have one more announcement, committee on committees.
Thank you. Thank you for watching out for me. Yes, okay, also on December 7th, at 2:00 PM, also by video conference, we're going to have a committee on committees meeting to work on just the one item, the 2021 council committee assignments. And thanks again for not letting me miss that one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Council President Perez?
I also want to announce that on Monday, November 30th, we will not have a council meeting because it's the fifth Monday of the month.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, we're at the end. What's the wish of the council?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.